I started the recording.
Great, thank you Nicole. Good evening, this is Chairman Jesse Geller. Before we begin, I will confirm that all members and other persons anticipated to participate on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Johanna Schneider.
Present.
And Saul Feldman. Is that correct?
Yes, Saul, please state that you're here.
Saul.
I did tell him that he didn't need to be here for the 40B part of the hearings.
Alright.
Could you announce that again at the beginning of the 48s?
That is what I will do.
Thanks.
We don't need him for this part. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Nicole Parry.
Here.
And are you wearing two hats tonight?
Yes.
Great, okay. All speakers should identify themselves by name prior to speaking. This hearing of the ZBA in open session is being conducted remotely and in a manner that is consistent with the legislature's extension of provision, initially made by March 12th, 2020 Executive Order of the Governor, concerning the now expired state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak over the COVID-19 virus. This body is authorized to meet entirely remotely so long as adequate public access is provided. Adequate public access does not include public participation unless that participation is required by law. This hearing will or may feature public comment. For this hearing, the ZBA is convening by video conference through Zoom, as posted on the town's calendar, which identifies how the public may access the hearing. Be advised that this hearing isn't that some attendees may be participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that others may be able to see you, and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town website and attached to this hearing invitation. The hearing will follow the agenda unless I note otherwise. Finally, before turning to the agenda, I will cover some ground rules that will permit clear and effective conduct of our business and help to ensure accurate hearing minutes. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. I will invite each member by name to provide any comment, question, or motion. Please hold your own until your name is called. Please also remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking and to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Before responding, please wait until the floor is yielded to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in sidebar conversation with other members, please do so through me. Finally, each vote taken in this hearing will be conducted by roll call vote. For any public comment component of this hearing, I will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify themselves by name and address only. I will call on each by name. Please enter your name into the chat section. You will find the chat icon on the bottom of your screen. Click on this icon and the chat window will appear on the right. Our host Nicole will queue members in the order in which their request is received. Additionally, we will ask if members of the public who are calling in would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to a particular project. Okay, Nicole, I understand that before we start on 48 cases, we have a couple of continuances involving comprehensive permits. Take it away, Johanna.
Good evening, my name is Johanna Schneider and I am sitting as Chair for the 40B residents of South Brookline matters that are before us this evening. The applicant is seeking two modifications to a previously granted comprehensive permit. We are continuing these matters this evening to January 22nd, 2025 at 7:00 PM.
Nicely done.
Thank you.
Okay, so I understand we also have a couple. No, I guess we only have one. Is that correct? We only have one continuation request under the 48 cases, Nicole?
Yes. At 1249 Beacon Street.
Why am I starting a video host? Okay, Saul Feldman, do we have you? Are you back?
I see his number there, let me, and it doesn't look like it's muted, but try and contact him.
Better call Saul. Had to.
I know, and that would have been tough to resist. Takes on a whole different meaning.
Yeah, especially for someone immature like me.
Bob, are you doing the continuation request?
Yes.
Great. Do you want to take that first, or are you here for other hearings?
The only one I have, so if I could take that first, I have to jump and go to planning board.
Yeah, okay.
I tried him, but I didn't get an answer, so. Saul, if you're there, we need you for the 48 cases.
Do you have his phone number?
Yeah, I called his phone number.
Do you have his address?
I do, I've been to his house.
You want to run over there?
In the village.
You want to run over there?
Whatever it takes.
Is, I hate to ask the question, is Randolph on standby?
He's traveling.
Okay.
And I would have to call one or see if he's available.
You tried texting Saul?
Yeah, I just sent him a message.
Maybe he's having communications issues.
Maybe if you can hear us, Saul, you can hang up and try to get on again.
Or go up to the steeple and put out a light.
Can you hear me now?
Nice throwback.
I just heard him, Saul, you did connect it, so maybe he's going to try back. Sorry for members of the public, we're waiting.
There you go. Just have to unmute Saul and you're good.
Jesse, can you hear me now? Absolutely, welcome Saul.
Great, great.
And Johanna, we still have you?
I'm still here.
Excellent, okay. So, our first case involves property at 40 Strathmore Road. No, I'm sorry, our first case involves 1249 Beacon Street. This is case number 20240052. And I understand the applicant is here to request a continuance.
I am, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Introduce ourselves.
Sure, for the record, my name is Robert Allen, I have a law practice 300 Washington Street in Brookline Village, here representing the owner of 1249 Beacon Street. Nothing, nothing more than a straight out conflict with, with our team tonight and should be very quick when we can get to it, and I talked to Nicole earlier and we're shooting for December 19th.
Correct.
I'm sorry to do that.
I'm aware of the conflict, I'd be in favor of this continuance. Saul?
It's fine with me.
Great, and Johanna, I assume you're in favor?
Yes, I am.
Great, so.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thanks Bob, have a good evening.
You too.
Okay, now we're going to jump back to our regular schedule. Our first case involves property at 40 Strathmore Road. This is an extension request and it's case number 2020, originally case number 2023000038. Again, for the record, my name is Jesse Geller and seated with me this evening are Johanna Schneider and Saul Feldman, who's here on behalf of the applicant.
I am, good evening, my name is Benny Bear. The architect for the project, my address is 2001 Beacon Street in Boston. And it's pretty straightforward, we're asking for time extension.
Okay, and what was the issue in not being able to operate under the original relief?
Just delays in getting a builder identified and contracted to do the work.
Well, it's a common problem these days. Okay, thank you. Board members, any questions? Johanna?
My only question is that I know that the state legislature recently adopted a economic development bill that automatically extends permits that were in place, I want to say it's from 2021 to 2023, I wonder if this, we even need to be granting an extension?
I don't know, wasn't, wasn't that all about the pandemic and delays due to the pandemic specifically?
I don't think so, I think it applies to any permit that was in place during the relevant time period. I'm just asking the question, I don't know if we've had any opinion from town council on how this affects our business.
Nicole, do you know, do you know of any opinion that's been generated by town council, or if town council has been asked?
Not on that matter, the only thing he had circulated to planning staff was regarding the number of extensions that can be granted, being limited just to one.
Yeah, okay. Johanna, do you, are you asking the question because you believe there's some prejudice or downside to our acting on this?
I don't think so, I just, you know, I want us to make sure that we're granting extensions that are necessary as opposed to ones that are not. I don't have a problem with the requested extension, but if by operation of law it's already been extended, I'm just raising the question.
It's a good, it's a fair question, but if the answer to my question is they don't get any longer of a period than they originally would have gotten anyway.
Well, they do, is the thing.
Ah, okay, so.
But in any event, I don't think we are equipped to, we're clearly not equipped to answer this, my question tonight. Nicole, I guess Jesse, you're the chair, so you need to make this request. But it seems like a request of town council to provide us with an opinion on this would be helpful and to provide staff with an opinion on this would be helpful because it could obviate the need for a bunch of extension requests.
Nicole, you got that?
Yes.
Okay, that's a request.
I wrote it down.
Okay, so for purposes of the subject matter, I would be in favor of granting this. I should ask, Saul, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, Jesse.
Okay, and Saul, are you in favor?
Yes.
Okay, Johanna?
I am in favor.
Great, so extended.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, good question, Johanna. Moving, right? Okay, our next case is case 20, is this possible, 20230061? Is that right, Nicole? So it says, okay, this is an application to construct a two-family structure at 103105 Coburn Crescent. Again, for the record, I'm Jesse Geller, seated with me this evening are Johanna Schneider and Saul Feldman. Tonight's hearing will be in the following order. We'll hear the applicant's presentation. We'll then hear from anyone who wants to speak in favor of this application, then from anyone in opposition. We will then hear the report from the building department, from the planning department and the planning board, and then we will hear any recommendations from the building department. Lastly, the board will deliberate and give its decision. If you do want to offer testimony this evening, we ask that you start by giving us your name, speak loudly and clearly, and please give us your address as well. Who's here on behalf of the applicant? Mr. Gladstone?
Actually not Mr. Gladstone anymore.
How are you?
Good Jesse, good to see you.
I was going to ask Scott why he wasn't at his new job. Please go ahead, start by introducing yourself, Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Ken Goldstein from the Brookline Law Firm, Goldstein and Herndon, here on behalf of this property, by the way, may I share a screen, I'm going to some.
I'm just a co-host, you could be able to share your screen now.
Okay, thank you. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, which is Aaron Adler, trustee of the 103105 Coburn Crescent Realty.
Ken, will you?
Yeah. Everybody see that?
I can see it.
Good.
Yes. Hey Ken, will you wave a reading of the notice, please?
Yes, I will.
Great, thank you.
So, so with, with us tonight also is Henry Bobic, who is the architect, I saw Henry is there, is here, but didn't see his face, and Stephen Cosmos, who is the landscape architect. So, the proposal before us is to demolish a two-family house that was built nearly 100 years ago, and that has fallen into disrepair, repair, and we want to replace it with a nearly identical structure that will be far more efficient in terms of energy and in terms of design and in terms of modern lifestyles. Nearly all the relief that's needed in this case is in the nature of an extension of a pre-existing non-conforming condition, and the relief can be granted under Mass General laws 48, Section 6, and applicable case law. The standard to be applied in nearly every instance is that the conditions proposed are not substantially more detrimental than what was there before. The proposal meets that standard in every instance. As a two-family house in a south, in a SC district, that's a a single-family conversion district, in a house that has never been converted from a single family, it was always a two-family, it is a pre-existing, pre-existing non-conforming use and can be rebuilt as a two-family as long as it's not substantially more detrimental. And, you know, in every case, I'm going to say, we're going to repeat this, I'm going to say that's what was there before, it can't be more detrimental if that's what was there. The same, same standard applies to the minimum lot size, the FAR, the maximum height, and side yard requirements. Note that as to FAR, the FAR is increasing only because of a more efficient use of the available interior space. There is no expansion of the building envelope whatsoever. And as to the height, the difference is only four inches over the height of the existing, existing structure, an amount that will not be discernible to the naked eye, and is in keeping with other houses on the street. You can see by this picture, by the way, that it's got a twin next to it and it will still appear to be about the same height. And all of the streets on this particular block of Coburn Crescent are similar size and stature and, and setback as well. The due, largely to valuable infot from the planning board, which is, by the way, why this has taken almost a year to get to the ZBA, the proposal no longer needs relief for usable open space or for underground structure provisions of the bylaw. The parking has been, was originally proposed in the, in the front yard, a structured parking under the front yard, but that's no longer the case. There is some minor side yard setback relief, which is arguably not an extension of a non-conforming condition. There's a flanking parking space, which you'll see on the site plan in just a minute, on the left side of the proposed freestanding garage that was not there previously, and it may be seen to slightly violate the five-foot, six-inch setback requirement. And there's also with some questions Scott had about the air conditioning condensers, I think that might have been remedied, though we'll ask our architect to enlighten us on that.
Ken?
Yes.
Let me ask you a question because you raised it. Are you saying there are new non-conformities?
No, well, arguably on the parking space that we'll see in the rear, it's, it's pretty minor, but arguably that's the only new non-conformity. It's unclear how that, you know, if that was a space previously or not, that's why it's arguable.
Okay, well, we'll continue this discussion, I mean.
This is the back.
Continue this later. My concern is 48, Section 6, as you know, doesn't allow for new non-conformities.
Oh, I understand that. But there are no new non-conformities with any of the other aspects of this, so.
Okay.
So it is subject to the design review as well, and this has been through with the, the planning board repeatedly and and I think you'll find that the, the design is, is very satisfactory, given that it, it nearly, it's nearly identical to what, what's there currently. So, next, I'm going to have Mr. Bobic walk us through the design. By the way, there's a new site plan that was substituted today. The only difference between this site plan and the previous site plan was that we've included the provisions, you know, the, the details of the landscape plan, which is also part of what we'll see tonight to to, you know, bring it as up to date as possible. There's not been no changes to any of the structure or the envelope from what was previously recommended by the planning board. So, this is the existing condition site plan, and I'm now going to turn it over to Mr. Bobic to kind of walk you through the design.
Good evening, Board, my name is Henry Bobec, I am the architect of record. My office is at 73 Bishop Road in Sharon, Massachusetts. This design has been done to completely emulate the existing envelope. Ken, if you could go back to the original picture that you were just showing, just want to make one, you know, the, yes, okay, that one right there. So, our unit is the one to the right, and you could see that the way we differ from the twin is that the covered entry that they have is sort of spindly, it's just like a bare bones structure, and ours is completely covered in shingles. So, we maintain our whole shingle approach, but you could see that the gambrel style, the extended rakes in the front, all that, that, that makes it sort of a twin. We are emulating that, Ken, if you could go back to the elevations. Yeah, right, so that's the existing, and I believe that's, I believe that's, that's the proposed right there?
That's existing.
Oh, that's.
Tell them apart, that's proposed.
Okay. So you could see that it's identical, there is a slight difference because what we decided to do was the right now, both units enter from that front porch. So even though the units are up and down, the first two levels, the first floor and the basement level is for the lower unit, and the second floor in the attic is for the upper unit, the entrance for the new, for the, for the upper unit is from the rear. So that is something that changed, so we no longer have two doors in that covered front entrance, that's basically the difference, and some of the windows did shift because the room allocation is different. What we did was using the same envelope, we created more of a, you know, more of a contemporary layout, you know, more open. The current layout, if you go to the first page, Ken, you could see it's just, it's like a railroad car, you just walk through one room to get to another, and that's just not what people expect now. And I, I would say that that's primarily the difference is the interior, not the exterior, and the fact that now one entrance is in the front and one entrance is in the rear. That's, it's pretty simple, and like Ken mentioned, there's only a four-inch difference between the heights. The reason why on the height chart it varies because we now provide heights from the two different streets, it's, but from an apples-to-apples provision compared to the existing structure, it is only four inches or so difference in height.
Kenny, will you describe the, the parking solution here, please?
Okay, so what we decided to do as well as the unit, the twin, has a enclosed parking structure at the rear. Ken, I think you actually had a picture of the rear that might have shown that. And so what we're now providing is a 20-foot by 20-foot, that's it, you could see it on the, on the right-hand side there. We're providing a 20-foot by 20-foot garage structure in the middle of our property. Ken, you know, it's interesting, Ken, if you go to that picture there where you see the red car that you were just showing before, it really does appear that the paving goes all the way to the property line. You know, so, you know, that non-conformity that you were talking about, I, it does appear to be four parking spaces wide, so anyway, this parking structure is a one-story structure, flat roof, similar to the one next door, and it has an 18-foot garage door that can support two vehicles, and then on either side there is a flanking parking space, and that shows up in the colored plot plan right there at the bottom left-hand corner.
And where are the air conditioning compressors?
The air conditioners are, if, you're exactly showing it right there with your arrow, perfect.
Those are here now.
And those, those units are no closer than the edge of the existing building.
And we can ask the building department this later, but I think originally that's why they were cited for, for side yard, and those have been relocated now, right? So that there, there's no question of side yard infringement there anymore, if I'm not mistaken. Thank you, Henry.
You're welcome.
Can I ask?
Ken, let me ask a question, can you just show me where the parking is? The new parking?
Well, this is the best demonstration here, so this is the structure, structured parking here, the garage is being built, there's one parking space flanking it on the left, and one parking space flanking it on the right.
And assuming it's a new non-conformity, what are we talking about?
You mean, what is, what is the, the distance between the lot line and the, and the edge of the parking space?
What's the new non-conformity? Just show me the area that may or may not be the new non-conformity.
Henry, do you know?
Go to the, I think the next page is the existing plot plan. Oh, see, it does not show, I don't think it shows a paving line, and you see how those trees are on the right top corner there? So if you look at the picture, Ken, if you could go back to that rear view picture, that's what's sort of confusing to me, so you see, you see where the property line, so I don't know exactly where that property line is, it almost looks like the edge of the paving is the property line. Do you have, are you able to share of the new landscaping plan, I don't know if it, if it, it's, it would be a separate file, okay, there it is. It would be a separate file, okay, there it is.
Steve, did, what, did we have to dem- remove any trees or, or that did not show up on the plot plan, correct?
Those, yeah, those trees are not on our property, they're the adjacent property.
Yeah, so.
Currently, the pavement does go from property line to property line.
So I don't think it's a new non-conformity, I just think we were just unsure about it, that's all. Right.
Was it cited as a new non-conformity by the building department?
You know, you, you're gonna have to ask the building department that because uh, Scott was on, a little unclear about what the side yard issue was, and I, I am too.
Karen Geller, I think we need to have a better understanding of what exactly the relief is that this applicant is. Seeking, I mean, I know that we're already well into this hearing, but I don't know how this board can. Evaluate the proposal without understanding which criteria we're supposed to be applying.
Well, you, you're, you're applying the, uh, respectfully, you're, you're applying the criteria for, for non-conforming condition. Uh, in, in, in every instance, if the board. Finds in the, in, in, and, and I would think you would talk to the building department about this, if you, if you find that, that there is a, a new non-conformity as to any side yard. Then we'd ask for the special permit for that as well.
So you are prepared, if we only make the section six findings that are being requested tonight, you're happy to come back for a special permit relief later if necessary?
Well, I, I, I would think you could do both tonight, but, but.
I'm not, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that this matter was noticed for new non-conformities, was it?
No, and I think it would be helpful if someone pulled up the chart in the planning board report, because it lays out what the setbacks are and what the relief, the section is under. Ken, if you want me to pull that up for you, I'm happy to do that.
Yes, would you please?
So from my understanding, the. Structure, the left side yard is pre-existing non-conforming, the front yard setback is pre-existing non-conforming. The side yard setback is pre-existing non-conforming for the parking area. Um, they're no longer requesting relief for underground parking. And the side yard setback for the condenser requires a special permit under section three, sorry, under section four point, five point four three and under section five point seven five.
Are there, Nicole, is it your understanding, and I know you're covering for the building department tonight, but. Is it your understanding that this is a complete list of the relief necessary?
Well, I will caveat that by saying I thought so, but we did receive a new site plan today, um, and. It was sent to Paul, but I'm not sure that he sufficiently was able to review that. So if there are changes in the site plan, then we probably need to take a look at it.
I, I can tell you, the only change in the site plan was um, that um, was because of the landscape plan. Um, I added a terrace wall and a couple of planters around the site, and then the engineers uh, echoed that on their plans. I mean, not, neither the building or moved or, or changed.
Yeah, but what about, uh, Steve, what about that tree that we removed, though?
That, that's just part of the landscape plan, I'll explain.
Okay. Um, I, 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 I'm a little confused about the side yard setback, the Claflin parking. So the first number, five point six feet. That's saying that's what's required, and then, and it's saying it's less than five point six in both cases, so.
I think it's because it varies, maybe, I'm not sure what the left amount is, um, I didn't write the report, but that would be my guess.
Okay, so, so those are, but you see in the other ones, it says pre-existing non-conforming. How come it doesn't say pre-existing non-conforming under that section, because they're both pre-existing non-conforming? Maybe that's, maybe that's the confusion right there. Because they're both less than five foot six, so wouldn't they be pre-existing non-conforming?
Yeah, we, we would argue it, yes, that it's always been like this, is, is, as far as we know, but I, I think the history is lost.
Was that exterior parking space in existence when the building department looked at this originally and cited?
Yes.
Okay, so the building department has not specifically cited that as a um, required. Um, non-conformity that requires relief. I mean, I'm looking at the chart, it's not talking about.
Well, but, but Jesse, the chart does list pre-existing non-conformities, right, which are obviously under section six and require a.
Right.
Finding of not substantially more detrimental, but then there are, you know, additional special permits that are cited as, as being needed. So I don't know if those are tied to the new non-conformities, or if there are additional new non-conformities, it's not super clear.
I don't know.
Well, the last one is the only one, has been, underground parking garage is not, doesn't apply anymore. The only thing um, that's new are the condensers, and I think they can get relief under section five point seven five for an encroachment of an energy-saving device.
And what, what about the, and, but that side yard setback for Claflin parking, that's also a special permacole, is not needed anymore either?
But it doesn't look like it's even cited.
It's not cited.
Oh, there it is. Go, go back to where it was.
It says, it says special permit, yeah, you're right, I don't know, it's, the footnote is one under.
The footnote is one, yeah.
So.
But maybe the footnote should be three on that one?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
But it's citing existing as, as five feet, six inches.
Well, I don't think we know that, right, because I think what Nicole just said is that it varies and it's less than, but not quantified.
Okay, do you, Ken?
Yes, yes.
Do you need that parking? For. I- is that required under the bylaw?
Um, yes, we need four parking spaces.
Okay. Is there enough space to have a legal parking space without encroachment?
No, Henry, can you answer that?
No, it's a very narrow lot, no, there is not enough room. It's like, uh, if you go to the uh, original chart, I think, is the property like fifty feet wide? It, it's very narrow.
Can I just fit two cars in there?
I'm sure you answered this, but they were not noticed. For special permit relief in general, is that correct?
Uh, I could, would have to pull up the, the notice, I can do that.
Yeah, I mean, if they've been noticed for a special permit relief, then I think we can, we're able to take up that part of the application as well.
Send the staff report.
So this is the published, published notice, um. It looks like everything that was originally in the denial letter was in here. Although I don't see five point four three.
Right, that's the problem.
That is the problem.
We don't have, we don't have an avenue with which to grant the special permit.
Sorry, because it wasn't in the notice?
Right.
But. We, we don't send the notice.
No, you don't, but.
I mean, it should have been in the notice, right?
Yeah. Just as, as sort of a safety net. Yeah.
Does it, sorry, I don't know, I know much what I'm speaking about, but doesn't it say design of uh, all off-street parking? Right there in that notice that you showed?
Yeah, like, critical, but there's one section that allows us. To grant special permit relief, and, and it is not cited.
Um, uh, as a fallback, if, if we're gonna get strict on this, on this point, you know, can we approve the rest of the project and we'll come back on the, on the parking?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any reason why you can't do that, and you know, it may be, it sounds like from what the project architect has said. There remains some confusion internal to the team as to whether this is a pre-existing condition or not. If, you know, there's evidence that it's a pre-existing condition, then that would fall under what's been noticed and what we can hear tonight.
I believe it is a pre-existing condition, a- as shown on the, if you look at the uh, if you look at the plan and you look at the picture. Ken, I, if, if Ken could share that uh, existing plot plan, you'll see the trunks of those trees. Are a- at the rear, the top right corner, Ken, by the arrows, by the north arrow, i- if you zoom in on that a little bit, you could see it more clearly. So over there, so you see the trees and you see the pavement mark, and clearly the, it, while we're not standing directly in front of it, clearly the edge of the paving. Is to the right of those tree trunks, and now if you go back to the plot plan, you could see that those tree trunks. Are, are not on our property, as Steve had mentioned earlier. And that's over by the uh, north arrow sign, if you could zoom in on that, you could see that. And so that does seem to corroborate um, with the picture. And show that the um, paving line does line up with where the property line appears to be.
Is the trees. There are the trees, you can see the edge of pavement right here, that's it.
Right, there's that, I, I, I don't see an arrow, where's your arrow on the screen, just to show, point to.
You can't see my arrow?
Okay, you're on the wrong side of the property, go to the other side. Right there, those are.
To the, yep, to the right, to the right, you can see the, the faint line right there.
Exactly, and you can see that the trunk is away from the edge of the property line, so that gives us a little bit of um, you know, um, tolerance there. So I think that clearly the paving might slightly be on the neighbor's property, or, but it's. It's very close to where those tree trunks are, so that's, appears to show that the paving is. On this plot plan appears to be corroborated by that rear picture that was just shown. So it's an existing, basically I'm saying that it's an existing condition. And you had mentioned that if, if we could show that it's an existing condition, then perhaps we can get that approval there.
Well, so it, it seems there are a few options here. Um, should the board find you meet the requirements under forty-eight, section six, we can make a section six finding. For the balance of the project, and that sort of leaves you with having to deal with the parking. And unfortunately, that's pretty inefficient and nuisance and expensive. Um, we try not to burden people with inefficiencies and expenses, but seems to me that's one option. Um, I'm wondering whether the other way is. You, you're, you're convinced that this parking space conforms? Is that where you're, where you are going?
I'm saying that it exists. And it meets with that charge with that chart that says that it's less than five foot six from the property line.
It's existing non-conformity is where.
Existing non-conforming, yes, thank you, Ken.
And I, I think that Henry makes a good point, the, the, the pavement there is not new, it's, goes to the edges, it's, it's been there.
Have vehicles been parked there?
Yes.
It's in the picture, there's a vehicle parked in the picture.
Could you park two vehicles there?
You mean tandem?
Yeah.
No.
No, I don't think it's deep enough, no, it's.
Okay, what, what about, is there another way other than tandem to do it?
Four, four parking spaces, no.
So you, you couldn't, there's no way to finesse it, so you get two vehicles parked there?
Okay, Ken, why don't you finish up with your presentation?
Okay, um, so, um. I was just talking about design review and that, uh, that, that had already been approved. Well, I, you know, I, I was, I would simply s- 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 say that, you know, even though the nine point oh five. Special permit standards are not applicable, applicable to the relief that we're seeking, they are a good guide to what significant detriment means. And so I, 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 I made the exercise of comparing those uh, nine point oh five conditions. So, so the site is appropriate for the use, we know this because this is essentially identical to the structure that was, that was previously there. The proposed use will not adversely affect the neighborhood, again, it occupies the same footprint, and it provides even more open space and would be far more energy efficient. Uh, there'll be no nuisance or hazard to vehicles and pedestrians, uh, the plan provides precisely what, what was currently utilized. Inadequate facilities have been provided for the operation of the use, and it will not have an adverse effect on the supply of affordable housing. Um, I didn't give um, Mr. Cosmos the chance to walk me through the, the um, landscape plan, but we did take a look at it in. In our discussions, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, and I think it also uh, shows that, that this. Property will be greatly enhanced by, by this, by this plan, so. Uh, with that, I will uh, turn it back to you, knowledgeable board, thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, Nicole, uh, board members, do we have any questions? Johanna?
No, thank you.
Saul?
I don't have anything.
Great, okay, Nicole, do we have anyone who wants to speak in favor of or in opposition to?
No, we do not.
Okay, planning board, planning department reports?
Yes. So the planning board met uh, twice this year, once back in January, um, they had some concerns about the underground garage, which has been um, been removed. And then the latest meeting was on November fourteenth, the planning board discussed the revised project, and they noted significant improvement from the initial proposal. Particularly the floor plan and relocation of the parking to the rear. A tree in the area of the proposed parking space was identified on the survey with conflicting views about whether it was on the applicant's or the neighbor's property. To address the concerns about the tree, a condition is suggested for compliance with the town's tree preservation bylaw, including pending amendments. While public comments were largely in support, concerns were raised regarding the environmental impacts. Of allowing non-conforming structure to be demolished and replaced with a larger non-conforming one. The board acknowledged that these environmental concerns of demolishing a building to replicate it, but understood that the issue lay outside of the zoning purview. The board uh, voted three to one to recommend approval. The, so therefore the board recommends approval of the revised site plan by Christopher C. Charlton P L S. Dated eight, twenty, twenty twenty-four, and the revised architectural plans by Henry Bobic. R A dated October eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, subject to the following conditions. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall electronically submit final floor plans and elevations stamped and signed by registered architect. And a final site plan stamped and signed by registered engineer or land surveyor to the director for regulatory planning for review and approval. Two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the, a construction management plan shall be reviewed and approved by the building commissioner or designee. Three, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall electronically submit a road and control plan, subject to review and approval by the director of health or designee. And finally, prior to issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall electronically submit a landscape plan and tree replacement plan, subject to approval of the regulatory uh, director or designee. And then it says the counterbalancing amenity must be executed in accordance with the approved plan. I'm sorry, there's a fifth one. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall electronically submit to the building commissioner for review and approval of site plan, floor plan and elevations to split, displaying the approval of the director for answering planning and evidence the board of appeals decision was obtained at the town. That's by the representative I recorded at the registry of deeds. And then I have a memo here from Paul Campbell dated today, December fifth. And he writes regarding, uh, one oh three Colburn Crescent, the building department has no objection to the relief of work with the petitioner to ensure compliance with board decision and applicable codes.
Okay, so. Nicole?
Yes.
They're cited under five four three, which goes which is noted to a section where they no longer need relief. So are the conditions that pertain to counterbalancing amenities still relevant?
I believe that, at least according to the staff report, that's for the condensers with the new.
Well, but they're saying the condensers comply, right?
Were they saying that?
That's what I thought they said.
No, I thought it doesn't comply, but that it can obtain relief under five point seven five because it's an energy-saving device. I'm not sure if a condenser really is an energy-saving device. I'm not sure how that's defined, but um, that definitely does not carry a counterbalancing amenity requirement if that's the pathway to relief.
I mean, if they don't object, I don't care about adding it in, but I just don't follow the trail.
I don't either.
No matter what, so. Put them, it's fine.
Okay. All right, board members deliberation and decision. Let's start with you, Saul.
I'd like to see if this could come under, um, section six of chapter forty-eight. I don't know if it can, Jesse, but, uh, that would be, uh, those are my notes.
Okay. And, uh, Saul, you do not see anything that, um, is a substantial detriment?
I don't see anything that is a substantial detriment to the neighborhood. No.
Thank you. Johanna?
I think that we can, um, comfortably make the requisite finding under forty-eight, section six of, um, not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. Um, I remain a little concerned, and this is not on behalf of the board, but on behalf of the applicant who is going to, you know, need to submit adequate paperwork and potentially a zoning opinion to a financing source that they've gotten all of the zoning relief that they actually need. I don't know if there is. I mean, I suppose that it's, the burden is on the applicant and its team to figure out if they have asked for and gotten everything that they need. Um, if they're satisfied that they did and their counsel can write whatever opinions, then, you know, that's, that's up to them. Um, or they question of coming back to this board and seeking additional relief if that proves to be necessary.
Good answer. Thank you, Jo- thank you, Johanna. So, um, I, I agree with what Johanna has said. I mean, I, I, I think they've met the requirements for a forty-eight, section six finding. I would, I, I would make that comment.
Let's do it.
So, I, and I see absolutely nothing here that is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Um, so that is a unanimous determination. I just want to be clear. So are they or are they not seeking any special permit relief?
Is that for me to answer?
Yeah.
Um, then no, the answer is no. We we consider the side yard setback to also be in a, uh, pre-existing non-conforming condition and, uh.
Correct. Okay, I just. Thank you, Ken. Um, so that is a unanimous forty-eight, section six finding. Well, I want to thank everyone for their patience this evening.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Okay. Next case. This case, twenty twenty four zero zero forty-eight. This is an application to construct a second-story addition at two forty-six Clark Road. Again, for the record, my name is Jesse Geller. I'm seated this evening with Johannes Schneider and Saul Feldman. Thanks hearing be in the following order. We'll hear the applicant's presentation. We'll hear from anyone who wants to speak in favor of the application, then from anyone in opposition. We will then hear the planning board, planning department reports, and then we'll hear the recommendation from the building department. Lastly, the board will deliberate and give its decision. If you want to offer testimony this evening, we ask that you speak loudly and clearly. Start by giving us your name and your address. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening, uh, this is Andrew Falkenstein, architect. Nicole, if you want to unblock my video, I can turn the video on.
Andrew, we, Andrew, will you wave reading the notice?
I will.
Great, thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Andrew Falkenstein, architect with an office at seven Ken Street in Brookline Village. We are here this evening to ask the board for special permit relief under section six of chapter forty-eight. Um, the project in question is the addition of a second floor to an existing small bump out. This bump out measures uh, ten and a half feet by six feet. Um, and we are adding seventy seventy-eight square feet. Um, it's a seventy-eight square foot, one-story bump out, and we want to add seventy-eight square feet on top of it for the second floor. The two primary areas of relief that we're requesting are FAR. Um, the extra seventy-eight square feet takes us from a point four eight FAR ratio to a point four nine. This is an S-seven district, so the, um, allowable is, uh, point three five. Uh, this is existing non-conforming. Uh, also existing non-conforming and the second area of relief that we're asking for is side yard setback by about six inches. We're shy of the required side yard setback. Um, and we're not increasing it at all. We're going straight up. But we do, we are extending an existing non-conforming con- uh, c- condition. I'm happy to walk you through the plans if you'd like to, but this is really simple. Uh, I think in some ways the site plan is more instructive than the architectural. Um, if it's quicker for you, I can do it. Nicole, can you put the proposed site plan up, please? Thank you. Okay, all right, this, good enough. So everyone will see that at the bottom of the house, there's that little bump out that's seven feet off of the adjacent lot line. Yep, right there. Um, it's an existing shed-roofed one-story addition. And what we're looking to do is simply raise it up an, an additional nine, ten feet. Uh, uh, and the planning board had some um, aesthetic comments, which we have adopted, uh, in whole or in part. Um, and what should be interesting to, as you see from this site plan, is the only abutter that this strongly impacts is the immediate, uh, uh, adjacent abutter, which is two fifty Clark Road. Um, and, um, no one else can really see it. You, you can see, you'll be able to see it from the street, but it doesn't affect anybody else. Um, and this, this, um, abutter, um, it is David O'Connor and his wife, uh, Daria. And they sent an email in support today. Uh, I forwarded it to Nicole for the record, but there's not time to get it into, to your hands. But this one sentence email says, um, Daria and I would like you to know that we support your request to the zoning board of appeals for approval of your project. If you feel it would be helpful, feel free to share a copy of this email with the board. The email was directed, um, to their neighbors. Um, the, the owner of the property has been, um, uh, at that location for a number of years, enjoys good relationships with their neighbors. Um, and their neighbors are in full support, um, of this project. There are numerous other similar projects in the neighborhood in recent years where this board has allowed existing non-conforming FAR to be increased. And in almost all of those instances where I researched, the increase in FAR was for a much larger square footage amount than seventy-eight square feet. Um, I'll save this board time, uh, but I have, um, a number of, of buildings on, uh, on, on Clinton Road and Buckminster and Clark Road. Um, a lot of these were actually, actually in an S-ten district. The S-ten district has an FAR of point three oh, not point three five. And many of these existing non-conforming, um, special permits went from a point three five to a point four one, a point two three to a point three six. So we're only going from a point four eight to a point four nine. Every one of these other, uh, uh, special permits that were granted went up at, you know, five or six, you know, that, you know, points. Um, I, I really think that this is as, as clear and invocation and finding of section six of chapter forty-eight as is possible. Given the location of where this addition is happening, given the proximity to really one abutter who is in support, um, there is absolutely, uh, no detrimental, um, impact to the neighborhood. Same families living there, that they're just going to have seventy-eight square feet more space. Um, so zero detrimental impact. Um, and there are a lot of other houses in the neighborhood that already fill up their house the, the lot more than this house does, and they often get, um, special permits to go even larger. This is a very modest request. Um, the specific site is an appropriate location for the, for the user structure. No adverse effect to the neighborhood, no nuisance at all, same end user, very small, very quick project. Um, neighbor, the, the family has young children. They will continue to maintain and use this project, um, for the foreseeable future. Um, and this will not have any significantly adverse effect on the supply of housing for low and moderate income people. I would propose to this board that all the requisites for a finding in support of a special permit are in place, and I would move that this board, uh, res- respectfully move that this board do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members' questions. Let's start with you, Saul.
No, I don't have any questions. I think it's a, it's a good alteration. It should be allowed.
Okay, let's hold off on deliberation. Um, Johanna?
No question.
Great, okay. Nicole, do we have anyone who wants to speak in favor of or in opposition to?
No, we do not.
Okay, planning board, planning department report.
Great, I'm Nicole Prey, zoning coordinator for the town of Brookline. The planning board is supportive of the request for zoning relief. The relief sought is modest and should not adversely impact the neighborhood. However, the facade aesthetics of the addition could be improved to better fit the neighborhood and the existing house. The board suggested adding a window and exploring a better roof design such as adding a fascia board or continuing the slope of the existing roof. The board voted, uh, to recommend approval of the site plan by Patrick Rosengrave, PLS dated July third, twenty twenty-four, and the architectural plans by Andrew Folkenstein, RA dated June tw- thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, subject to the following conditions. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall electronically submit the final floor plans and elevations stamped and signed by a registered architect and the final site plan stamped and signed by a registered engineer or land surveyor to the director for regulatory planning for review and approval. Final site plan shall show one window in the front elevation. And two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall electronically submit to the building commissioner for review and approval site plan, floor plan and elevations, displaying the approval stamp of the director for regulatory planning and evidence the board of appeals decision has been obtained from the town clerk's office and recorded at the registry of deeds.
Thank you, Nicole. Building department, anything?
Yes, and then I have a letter from Paul Campbell from today regarding, uh, two forty-six Clark Road. He writes that the building department has no objection to the request of relief. I will work with the petitioner to ensure compliance with the zoning by law board decision and applicable conditions and code.
Thank you. Okay, board members deliberation. Saul, you started, so you get to continue now.
Well, like I said, I think it's a good, uh, alteration and should be allowed so that, uh, it's not detrimental to the neighbor, to the neighbors and, uh, uh, I, uh, I, I, I'm in favor.
Hey, does it meet the requirements under forty-eight, section six?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Johanna?
Um, I think this is a very modest and appropriate proposal. Um, I think that it does satisfy, um, the standard under forty-eight, section six. I also note that they have been cited for needing a special permit under section eight point oh two for the alteration or extension of a non-conforming structure. Um, their representative ran through the criteria for a special permit under nine point oh five, and I am satisfied that those criteria are also met.
For all the reasons Johanna has, um, read into the record, I agree. So we have made a forty-eight, section six finding and to the extent necessary, a special permit finding. Thank you, applicant.
Thank you very much, board.
Our applicant's architect.
Thank you.
Okay, Nicole, do we have anything else?
No, that concludes the business.
Excellent. I want to thank the board members and Nicole for your patience.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nicole.
And good night.
I'm going to say.
All right, so it would, thank you.